I called the order of the November 2nd, 2023 special meeting of the University of Minnesota Board of Regents. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here and making the time. Those of us joining in the boardroom as well as those on Zoom and via livestream. Chair Mayron is unavailable to attend today's meeting in person, though she is with us on Zoom, and I will be chairing in her absence. I'd like to welcome my colleagues here, as well as those on Zoom, which we do have a number of, as well as the community members watching the livestream. We have two agenda items, both very important. So with that, we'll immediately move to our agenda. Agenda item number one is the presidential profile, position profile, which is before the Board for both review and action. I'd like to remind everyone of the steps that we've taken to get here. First of all was our conversation during our July Board Retreat, where we discussed the Board's approach to the search, including rough timeline and other things like that. Then we discussed key presidential leadership characteristics at both our September and October meetings. Then the Presidential Search Advisory Committee was charged at our October Board Meeting, and their first action was to quote, "solicit input from the university community regarding opportunities for the university's next president to make an impact, as well as the leadership qualities the chosen candidate will need to be successful." Additionally, the group was also charged to develop and recommend to the Board of Regents a position profile to guide recruitment of candidates. And that's where we are today. So with us to present the position profile are the Presidential Search Advisory Committee Chair, Regent Mary Davenport, who was on Zoom, as well as the committee's vice chair, Professor Chris Yugen, who's here with us in person. Joining them are our consultants from Woodkeeper, Christine Pendleton, and Melody Rose, who are on Zoom and ready to assist and offer insight as needed. With that, I will hand it over to Chair Davenport.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kenyanya. The Presidential Search Advisory Committee has been very busy since we were appointed at the October Board Meeting. We have been engaged with each other and with many different people, both on and off campus. But before I review that, I would like to first thank Vice Chair Professor Yugen, who's with you there in the boardroom, and the Search Committee for their dedicated and attentive work. I'd like to thank Marlo Welshons and everyone in the Office of the Board of Regents for their contributions, and Woodkeeper for their work thus far, and in advance for delivering on our expectations that you will connect us with a robust slate of candidates for our consideration. As the docket outlines, the committee held three listening sessions at each: Morris, Rochester, Hurstston, Duluth, and East Bank, West Bank, and St. Paul campuses. We spent time in Kaufman Union, talking with students. There were meetings with the Twin Cities Deans Council, the University Retirees Association, and with the Provost Campus Leadership Forum. Zoom meetings were held with the Senate Consultative Committee, the Foundation Board of the Trustees, alumni from around the world in a session organized by the Alumni Association, and with registered student government associations. Professor Yugen and I individually met with a number of constituents, including each of you, with our councilors, other senior leaders, and key legislative leaders. Collectively, we have so far engaged more than 600 people in this first phase of the search. But we are not done listening. We have additional meetings planned, and while these conversations won't change the position profile, they will help inform the Search Advisory Committee's work as we evaluate candidates. We also reviewed nearly 200 comments received through the Board's virtual forum, emails to press-search@umn.edu, written comment cards, and a survey that Woodkeeper made available to the university community. The position profile before you today represents a synthesis of what we heard. What you see in our docket is truly a reflection of what we heard. The Search Advisory Committee worked very hard collectively to ensure this profile represents what we heard. Now, the document has three sections. First, the leadership criteria and qualities. These are what we will use to evaluate candidates. Second, opportunities to make an impact. These are not only priorities for a new president, but they are areas that reflect what we heard should be high priorities for a new president. And just as a note, these are opportunities we believe make this, this position, the 18th President of the University of Minnesota System, a very attractive position. Third are the recruitment materials. This section was developed by University Relations in consultation with key communicators at each campus. So you can see, we have a lot to be proud of. Again, this demonstrates why we think this is an exceptional opportunity, and we are very eager to begin to recruit for it. Now, if I may, Vice Chair Kenyanya, I'd like to turn it over to the Search Advisory Committee Vice Chair, Professor Yugen.
Thank you, Chair Davenport. Professor?
Thank you very much. You know, at our first meeting, we discussed three Rs of the Presidential Search. One is recruitment, to identify and attract a world-class leader. Two is responsibility, and each member of the committee has felt and worn that responsibility to the university and to the state. And three is respect, respect for each other, respect for our community, and respect for the process. And so far, the team has just made outstanding progress, I think. I won't single out individuals, but the level of commitment, engagement, and listening has been outstanding, led by our tireless indefatigable Chair, Mary Davenport. I won't reiterate all of what we've heard in the listening sessions. I was joking, it's a four-volume set, you know, Encyclopedia Britannica-style. But we'll quickly highlight a few of the things that emerged in this leadership criteria and qualities that you see on page five of the packet. "The next president must lead with integrity and humility, and articulate and execute a bold vision while also embracing, embodying, and championing the university's mission, egalitarian culture, and values." It's a tall order. "They must actively listen and develop relationships with the university's many constituents, including students, faculty, staff, alumni, legislative leaders, and diverse community members." Now, to succeed, we think the president must lead from Minnesota, tapping into our tremendous strengths and the goodwill of the residents and the community and leaders in our state, and telling a story of a great public research university. They must be present and visible, adaptable to the changing environment, and a vigorous, long-term advocate for our interests. It's a huge, wide-ranging job, but it's also the coolest job in the world for the right candidate. In listening sessions, we heard that the president must start with a strong base of experience, impeccable character, and a willingness to listen and learn. They must be an excellent communicator with strong public relations skills and political acumen within and outside the university. They must have a demonstrated record of enthusiastic support and success in fostering an increasingly diverse, equitable, just, and inclusive community. They must also do the math and understand the university's complex financial dynamics: a $1.2 billion research portfolio, state support, and fundraising, so that we can all prosper. So I can say with confidence that our Search Committee is composed of many true believers in the university's mission, values, and core strengths. I feel that. It's one of the reasons I've been so happy here throughout my entire career. And we have every intention of recruiting a truly world-class leader as our 18th president. So thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Regent Davenport?
Thank you, Vice Chair Kenyanya. So colleagues, I hope you see the significant thought and careful consideration of the input we heard, and the translation of that input into the drafting of this position profile. The final document was a team effort, reflecting the input from the entire group, and it comes to you with the full support of the Search Advisory Committee. I'm sure you will join me in expressing our appreciation for the work that the members of the Presidential Search Advisory Committee did to create this profile, and for the significant work they will do over the next few months. So with that, Chair, Vice Chair Kenyanya, I move approval of the presidential position profile on behalf of the Presidential Search Advisory Committee.
There's a, then I have to ask for one. We have a motion and a second. Colleagues, before we, I mean, as we turn to discussion, I'll start with the, our colleagues that are on the committee and ask them to provide their perspective, and we'll definitely get around the Board and make sure everyone's input is included. With that, Regent Farnsworth, would you like to offer some of your thoughts?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Kenyanya. I just want to reaffirm everything that Chair Davenport and our vice chair have said about the process. It's been an honor and a privilege participating in this process. I want to thank our Presidential Search Advisory Committee leadership team for their super-hard work, along with the Office of the Board of Regents staff and our Search Consultants as well, for a ton of behind-the-scenes work that have got us to this point today, and is going to carry us through the rest of the process. I just really want to make two comments today, and they're both about the process. I just want to affirm the process that we're undergoing right now, and that I've had a chance to participate in up close and personally so far. I think the engagement sessions that the committee had teed up and that are underway, and as Chair Davenport talked about or talked about, are going to continue to be underway throughout the rest of this process, have been really important. Even at times where we've had feedback from various constituencies on various campuses, we've been able to adjust and change and add different opportunities, and that all has been really important, and we've learned a lot along the way as well. I want to speak specifically to the student community on all of our campuses. We've had particularly robust feedback and participation from students, and it's really important when we're undergoing such an important process. This is one of, if not the most important thing that the Board does and that a university does from our governance lens, that we get the process right, and that we feel like we have process integrity and collaboration and participation along the way. And so I've really appreciated particularly the feedback that students have shared with us, and how we've been able to adapt and change and continue to partner with our student-campus governance leaders along the way. And then finally, I just want to add, and maybe we're going to be getting to this in a little bit, but about, you know, the process moving forward, there's going to be another really critical juncture for the campus communities in February, when we get to the point where finalists are named, and finalists are doing tours, you know, amongst, and visiting the different campus communities. It's going to be so important. Of course, the engagement along every step of the process is important, but particularly that next step, when we've, you know, intentionally designed a feedback loop before the Board interviews any finalists, where we really intentionally and sincerely and meaningfully want that feedback. So this is kind of a momentous occasion and an important juncture for all the reasons that have been talked about already, but I just really wanted to lean into process and engagement today, and felt that it was worth mentioning that one of next steps of the process, which is going to be, require the same, if not more, level of engagement that we've been seeing across the system so far in the last number of weeks. So thank you again, Chair Davenport, for your leadership. It's an honor to serve alongside you, Regent Johnson, and the rest of the Search Committee, Regent Ruth Johnson, and the rest of the Search Committee. And that concludes my comments, Vice Chair Kenyanya. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Farnsworth, for the comments and for the service. With that, we'll turn to Regent Ruth Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Kenyanya. Well, I'm also glad to be here today to discuss with our entire Board of Regents' Presidential Search document we have before us. And as a member of the Search Committee, it feels like this is sort of the culmination of Phase One. So I have the three Cs. The first is we constituted the committee of 24. Secondly, we conducted these numerous listening sessions across the state of Minnesota, again, all five campuses, and actually three different campus areas in the Twin Cities. I was personally, I had the opportunity to be there in Rochester and at the West Bank and St. Paul, all of which were different and very helpful. And I would just say that as we had a good plan, we also were willing to be innovative and make some changes in things as we saw how this happened. So the kind of traditional listening sessions we had were very well-attended by faculty, and it's right into kind of the kind of forum that would be used to doing that, but we didn't have as many students showing up for these sessions. So ideas from people came forth, and basically, we decided that we would go where the students were, rather than trying to get the students to come to us. So that led to Regent Farnsworth and Regent Davenport actually going to Kaufman, Memorial Union, setting up tables, their tabling, and meeting students where they were at. And so we were able to get a lot more, you know, input invaluable from the students with that, and I just think that's one small example of what we did to kind of, let's see what we can do to absolutely get the best feedback and from all the constituencies here. So now that kind of takes us to the third and final thing of this phase, I think, which is the creating this document that's here for us to review today, obviously to discuss, amend, accept. I will say, it's kind of uncommon. We did a wordsmithing activity on this. Uncommon to do that virtually with 24 people, but the OBR staff, and particularly a shout-out to Marlo Welshon, but the team was able to, in real time, take all of our feedback and discussions, and put this, you know, together really well into the document you have before us. So I just look forward to further discussion, and if any, on this, and then moving forward to the next phases, Regent Farnsworth is talking about, and Regent Davenport. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Regent Johnson. With that, we'll turn to discussion. What I will say is, this Board charged the Search Advisory Committee with creating a position profile, so that is not what we are here to do. It is subject to Board approval, so I'm not, you know, trying to, I'm not trying to discourage feedback and discussion, right? So we definitely want those, but we're not doing the wordsmithing that they did. So just wanted to offer those comments. With that, Regent Tad Johnson.
Thank you. I just want to thank Regent Davenport, Professor, Regent Johnson, Regent Farnsworth, and the entire committee for their service on this. I sat through one of their meetings up at UMD, and in looking through this document, I can see how they worked in, with a great deal of, very deftly worked in some language and did some very nice wordsmithing, both. So as a former faculty member, a former student, and a Native American, I just want to commend your work and thank you for, and going above and beyond what was needed, going into Kaufman to talk to students. That was, that was a great idea. So, and Regent Davenport always is, seems like she's happy in her work, which is, I've served on these search committees before, and it's a very long process, but thank you for your thoughtful approach and your excellent worksman trick on this, on this document. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Tad Johnson. Regent for Halen?
Thank you, Vice Chair Kenyanya. I had to look up indefatigable.
It's open right there. It's right there.
But it is perfect. I mean, persistence and tirelessness. And I have heard from several individuals in our stakeholder community, in Duluth, in Morris, in the Twin Cities, all very appreciative of how engaged each of the Search Committee members have been when they've been in those communities, how earnest they've been in caring about the responses that you're receiving, and we see that thoughtfulness in this presidential profile. And so I just really wanted to express my thanks as well to all of you, but share with you that the individual stakeholders are also seeing that level of commitment, and really appreciate what everyone is giving to this process. So thank you.
Thank you, Regent for Halen. Any other comments? Also, looking at Zoom, see if our colleagues have their hands raised there. Well, seeing, I mean, I will just add in my own. First, obviously, to echo the thanks to the committee leadership, the committee membership, for all the time and service. To echo that, you know, the input doesn't end here. I mean, there's definitely, there's certainly avenues to continue offering that. We appreciate the service. And seeing all the comments, I mean, I think we're ready. It's great. There's nothing to discuss. There being no further discussion, we will move to a vote. We will do a roll call vote. So I will turn it over to Mr. Langworthy.
On the motion to approve the presidential position profile, Regent Davenport?
Yes.
Regent Davenport votes yes. Regent Farnsworth?
Yes.
Regent Farnsworth votes yes. Regent Gully?
Yes.
Regent Gully votes yes. Regent Hipsh?
Yes.
Regent Hipsh votes yes. Regent Ruth Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Regent Ruth Johnson votes yes. Regent Tad Johnson?
Yes.
Regent Tad Johnson votes yes. Regent Mayron?
Yes.
Regent Mayron votes yes. Regent Tal Yurabe?
Yes.
Regent Tal Yurabe votes yes. Regent Turner?
Yes.
Regent Turner votes yes. Regent for Halen?
Yes.
Regent for Halen votes yes. Regent Wheeler?
Yes.
Regent Wheeler votes yes. Vice Chair Kenyanya?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kenyanya votes yes.
Let me count it up. The motion is approved. Thank you very much, and we're excited to move to the next phase of this process. Professor Yugen, thank you very much for the service, and the service you will enter into. As we prefer to move to item two, I'll briefly pass it back to Chair Davenport, just to tell us what the next steps are.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kenyanya. Yes, so this is where, as with each of the listening sessions, I'm going to lean on you, you all. The next phase is the recruitment phase. So if you know of individuals that you believe would serve well and make a great 18th President of the University of Minnesota System, please let someone on the Search Committee or our search firm, Woodkeeper, know, so that we can pursue them. But, so now we're in the recruitment, the very active recruitment phase, and the next phase for the committee's work is to assist in that as we are able, and to then review the applications to fulfill our charge to you, to bring you two to four lead candidates for your consideration to move forward to formal finalists. And that when the finalists are named, then the plan is to bring them in, weather permitting, February, and for them to make campus visits. And then we'll get feedback from those campus visits, and then it's our turn to interview with the candidates, and then select the 18th President of the University of Minnesota System. So thank you for this key vote that allows us now to really get active.
Thank you very much, Chair Davenport. Again, thank you to the committee for your service and continued service. Looking forward to finding our next president, but in the interim, we enjoy the leadership of our interim president, for which we are very much appreciative. With that, we will turn to item number two, academic affiliation with Centra Care Financial Plan. For that, I will invite Associate Vice President Mike Volna and Bill Seibert, who is the Associate Dean and CFO of the Medical School and the CFO for M Physicians, to walk us through the financial plan. Associate Vice President Volna, yes?
Thank you, Vice Chair Kenyana, Chair Mayron, members of the Board. Happy to be here to talk to you today. As you mentioned, I'm here with Bill Seibert to walk you through the financial plan for the affiliation agreement with Centra Care. I'd like to also note that Mike Blair, the Chief Financial Officer for Centra Care, is also in attendance. In a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Bill to walk you through the materials which contain the plan. But first, I'd like to start by saying that the Senior Vice President's office has reviewed the financial plan, the agreement that you looked at last month, and Centra Care's finances. We think the plan is sound. The agreement provides appropriate and prudent safeguards for managing risks to the university, and Centra Care is a financially very strong organization to be partnering with. We have no reservations about the financial plan, and with that, I will turn it over to Bill to walk you through the plan itself.
Associate Dean Seibert?
We need to pause for a second. That presentation isn't, oh, there it is. There it is. Okay.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for taking the time. What I'd like to go through is this affiliation agreement that we have with, that we're planning on having with Centra Care. The purpose of the affiliation agreement, of course, is to address the physician workforce needs in rural Minnesota and beyond, and establish a regional campus for the medical school, and also provide four-year undergraduate medical education for 24 students per year, starting in 2025, and then having a full complement in four years in 2028 with 96 students. And also, additional part of that is the expansion of our residencies at the Centra Care facilities. Now, as we were looking at this affiliation agreement, we first wanted to make sure that it was financially sound, and what some of the risks were that we had to actually address. The first thing that we wanted to do is we wanted to look at the financial projections, where we were going to be from a revenue and expense perspective. So we engaged Kaufman Hall, which is an external firm, to look at the projections that we had. One of the things that's a, that mitigates some of our risk is that the medical school has done this before here in the Twin Cities and also in Duluth. So we have a very good understanding of our operational metrics, and some of the expenses and revenues that are actually generated. But we wanted to be very conservative in our projections, so we just projected revenue on an annual basis as we actually come to the full complement of 96. 24 the first year, 48 students, and so forth. So tuition is the only revenue that we actually have in our projections. The second part are the number of expenses that we actually have in those projections. And again, those expenses are based off of running two campuses, very knowledgeable about what staff it takes in order to be able to provide the necessary services and teaching to our potential students. And when we came to that, to the end of that projection, we saw that at full implementation, we have a $1.5 million per year deficit. Now, I need to really put that deficit into immateriality. What does it really look like? So Centra Care is a $2 billion organization. The budget annually for the medical school is 800 million, $1.5 million deficit. And even the expenses overall on annual basis, which would be 6 million, are very immaterial when you look at the size of the organizations that we're talking about. Here is the financial plan in detail. As you can see, that starts from 2025 to 2020, 2031, and you can see that that estimated $1.5 million deficit. And you can see that that estimated $1.5 million deficit. Some of the key financial assumptions, of course, are, as I said, 24 students per year. For the first and second year students, 5.25 academic full-time equivalent. For the third and fourth, 6.75. And we anticipate that most will be adjuncts, which means that they will be from the area in St. Cloud. Staff, 10.2 FTE. And one of the best parts of this partnership with Centra Care is that they have committed to actually cover the deficits that we would have during this process. But we are trying to make sure that there aren't that many deficits by making sure that we are financially responsible in our expenses and generating additional revenue, which I'll go through in a second. Here is Centra Care's financial summary. As you can see, they're close to a $2 billion organization. They have positive net income in 2022 and 2023, when most peers and other organizations in this industry had negative results during that timeframe. Days cash on hand at 238 is pretty admirable to have that much cash on hand. You can see their current ratio, which is current assets over current liabilities, and the debt, which is a third of their net assets. So these are just some of those financial highlights that I went through on the previous slide. The other aspect is the stable ratings from the rating agencies, which allow you, of course, to get a reasonable interest rate if you're looking to raise funding through debt. There is also a philanthropic plan that the University of Minnesota Foundation and Centra Care together plan to start this with a goal of $50 million. There's already, Centra Care Foundation has already started this process, and they have a commitment of $10 million already. $10 million of the 50 is earmarked for scholarships and student support. And hopefully, with the rest of the $40 million, the investment income can be utilized to offset some of the deficit that we're describing. So if it was only a 4% return, that in and of itself would be able to cover the annual deficit that we're talking about. Some of the risks. And this was the most important part to a CFO. It's like, everything looks good. Let's see what those risks are and how we're addressing them. So what if the enrollment projections aren't met? Well, with the university's medical school, approximately 3,500 students apply each year, and we accept 230. So the idea of adding another 24 per year does not seem like a high risk. So we believe that, we're very confident that we'll be able to add 24 more students out of that 3,500 applicant pool. What if the staffing levels are insufficient for campus needs? Again, one of the things that we have done and done very well is operate two other campuses where we have an understanding what it takes in order to be able to provide the services and the teaching that's necessary to learn. What if the fundraising goals are not met? Well, the fundraising goals are not part of our projections. They're additive. As I said before, it would be nice to have those fundraising goals. They already have a commitment for $10 million, but at the same time, those are not in our conservative projections. And what if Centra Care is financially unstable to sustain their funding commitments? Through our $800 million budgeting process through the university for the medical school, we believe we'll be able to cover that. I can ask Mike Volna if he can talk about the budgeting process, if you have any further questions on how we would cover that gap or deficit in case of Centra Care not being financially able to sustain that funding. Again, I've shown you their financial statements. I'm very confident that they will be able to do that. Finally, is this a financially sustainable plan? The, how collaborative this relationship has been since the inception is incredible. That is one of those non-monetary factors that you really need to take into account when you look at whether a plan is sustainable or not. It's vital for Centra Care to realize its strategic plan. They believe that this is a part of their future growth, and so they are committed to making sure that they make sure the medical school is a success. And we've talked about Centra Care's financial position. We've talked about how conservative the projections are. We've also talked about this joint philanthropic plan that we believe, and Centra Care believes, that we'll be able to hit that goal of $50 million. And finally, we've done this before. We're doing it now, and we believe we'll do it even more successfully in another location because we've learned over the last 50-plus years, different things. So that's all I have for right now. I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Associate Dean Seibert, thank you very much for the presentation. Questions from colleagues? Yes, Regent Reilly.
Yeah, first of all, thank you very much. I want to remind the board that we actually reviewed the academic affiliation agreement in the Special Committee on Academic Health and found that to be sound as well. This was a follow-up. We want to make sure it's not only sound, but it's sustainable. So this is a follow-up that we looked at all the financial underpinnings of this. And I will say the excitement is high. And we just saw, gosh, Dean Toller, Dean Delaney and I saw a presentation at the Governor's Task Force on Academic Health about the post-pandemic healthcare workforce needs, and they're hugely needed in rural and greater Minnesota. So we're even maintaining excitement about this. I appreciate very much the work done on the financial modeling. Centra Care is a very high-performing, well-run, high-quality system, and they have been enormously collaborative, and their balance sheet is very strong. So we feel good about the health and good about the presentation of this, and it's a sound financial plan, so we do feel like it's sustainable. Couple of questions I have that were raised. One is, there's a proposed $18 million renovation to one of the buildings to accommodate the medical school. Wanted to see how that is funded and if that was a risk that we should be attending to. And the other thing, I just wanted to understand from probably Mike Volna, if there are unbudgeted requests or there is more that comes through, how we would handle that through our process and through our governing process. I understand that there's a committee composed of UMMC members and Centra Care members to hash out most of the budgeting things. But if there's something unforeseen and unbudgeted, how do we use our governance processes to address that? So two questions. One is the risk of the $18 million at risk? And secondly, on how we would deal with some surprises from a budgetary standpoint?
Thank you.
Associate Dean?
Yes, could I answer those two in reverse order? Have Mike actually deal with the budgetary aspects and then actually have the CFO of Centra Care?
There he is.
Right here. Every man he can talk about.
Mr. Blair, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Chair, Vice Chair Kinyana, Regent Wheeler. So the partnership, the finances for the partnership will actually be on the university's books, which is a good thing, because what that means is that we will have annual budgetary review and oversight of the partnership's finances in addition to those governance aspects that are built into the affiliation agreement. I believe the affiliation agreement has governance provisions for how the various oversight groups will handle unbudgeted items. But I would also say that a budget is a plan, and it is not uncommon that sometimes the budget and the plan vary a little bit. As Bill noted, the finances for the medical school are very significant. And in the event that there was an unbudgeted item that the partnership incurred, and for whatever reason, the partnership, the affiliation agreement, didn't account for it, we believe when looking at the numbers that are in the plan that the medical school would have appropriate resources to cover that. But as I said, because these finances will be on the university's books, we will have good oversight and good review of all of this activity.
Thank you, Associate Vice President. Not sure who's going to kick us off for the next one. Mr. Blair, it looks like?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. So I'll start back and I'll work up to funding the $18 million for the facility. As you've heard a number of times when Dean Toller and Dr. Holman have been speaking here, they have a special relationship. And that relationship is based on trust. And we're creating that same relationship between the organizations. And how we create that trust is first making sure we have mutual commitment to the mission. And you've heard that from Dr. Holman. You've heard that from Dean Toller. This is critical for rural Minnesota. And the second is to create those guiding principles for how we're going to operate within this joint venture. And as Regent Wheeler referenced, that's in the affiliation agreement. Those are codified in the affiliation agreement. The third element is around the governance structure. And it has to be a governance structure that encourages collaborative decision-making and accountability, and that is also codified in the affiliation agreement. But I think what is probably the most important is both organizations have to be able to address the vulnerability of the other organization. And so for Centra Care, we've had similar discussions at our board. And the board's question has been, if you're going to commit to the academic mission support to fund the deficit, how do you know the university will run that medical school in a financially prudent manner? And we are able, with Bill and the others from the team, to give them that assurance that they will run it. As Bill said earlier, they already run two campuses. And we built that into the governance structure. So I'm here to assure the regents that the university's vulnerability is, what if Centra Care does not live up to their commitment? And I want to let you know two things. One is, you've saw our balance sheet and our financial performance. We have the means to live up to our commitment. But most importantly, you have Dr. Holman and my commitment that we will live up to our commitment. And so when we think about the facility and the cost of $18 million, we certainly hope we'll get legislative funding for that. We've already received $5 million. We're hoping to get the rest. We've already had one tour by the House Representative. The Senate is coming next week to do the tour as well. We are fully committed that if we do not get the funding, we will fund it. The money is already set aside. It's already gone through our board for approval. So we will cover any funding deficit as it relates to the building.
Regent Wheeler?
No, that answers my questions. And again, enthusiastic support and really appreciate the diligence on the financial plan. Thank you, Vice Chair Kinyanya.
Thank you very much. Turning to Regent Gully.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you so much, speakers. I just want to echo the sentiments that I'm really grateful for the thorough financial plan and for having a strong sense of how this is going to come together as a partnership. And I'm also grateful for the commitment to rural healthcare. We hear over and over and over again how much communities are struggling with not having enough healthcare providers, and the University of Minnesota is one of the biggest educators of our healthcare workforce. And so this is a great opportunity to grow that. And I appreciate seeing that you have set aside money for scholarships. I wanted to ask a couple of questions related to folks who will be working in this program. First, I wanted to ask about the use of adjuncts and if it's something that feels like a necessary part of the plan. I am concerned that the students might not feel that there's anchors in the program if we're hiring all adjuncts. And I say that as someone who has many years of being an adjunct and knows exactly how dedicated adjuncts and contingent faculty are to students. But I feel like it's really important that we have anchors in this program. And so maybe I'm misunderstanding, and maybe this is just really about people who are working in the facilities. I would appreciate some clarity on that. And I also wanted to ask, I'm a little bit concerned about, and this won't be a big surprise to folks, about the things that I hear about Centra Care's work with unions. And I would appreciate it if Centra Care would be willing to consider a card check neutrality agreement for any labor organizing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Regent Gully. First question will be for the Associate Dean, and then maybe Mr. Seibert.
Yes. One of the things that I do know is I know my bailiwick, and this is outside of my area of expertise. So I could do one or two things. I could record the question and bring it back to this group, answering it fully for people that are knowledgeable about that area.
Vice President Toller? Yes.
Vice Chair Mayron, Vice Chair Kinyana, I'm sorry. I am so used to see her that...
If you squint a little bit.
Keeping and laughing.
Accept my apologies.
No, not needed.
Vice Chair Kinyana, Regents and Regent Gully, thank you for your questions. The medical school has over 3,000 faculty, and about a third of them are affiliate. This is not a subordinate position of the faculty. We, in fact, work very, very closely with other healthcare systems. I just visited for three hours with Hennepin this morning. Hennepin would be one, health partners, Alaina. We have Centra Care. We have faculty distributed across the Twin Cities and the greater Minnesota. And that makes this training diversified and very nimble. And so there is not some kind of a power gradient or reputation gradient between the two.
Thank you, Dean Toller. Mr. Blair, perhaps, on the second question?
Yeah, as Bill said, there is, well, I would have to take that back in terms of the question around the contract with the labor pieces. We will certainly take that under advisement, but I can circle back with the regents at a later time.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Blair. Regent Gully?
Yeah, I sincerely appreciate, and I realize that it's a little bit outside of the financial plan, but it is, of course, a big part of the financial plan, so it feels important, and appreciate the answers. Just a quick follow-up on the question of adjuncts. Will there be full-time people in the program? I understand the need to have people who can work with students on lots of different things and that that, you know, might be what you're looking for. But just wondering, will there be some full-time faculty working with the students?
Dean Toller?
Vice Chair Kinyana, Regent Gully, very good questions, and the answer is yes. In fact, the full first 18 months of the medical school, which is typically spent, majority of it anyway, in basic sciences, will be taught by the full anchor faculty, if you will, of the medical school because that is our contribution to the St. Cloud campus, to the Centra Care campus, because there are not people who are trained as basic scientists in that area.
Thank you very much, Dean. Thanks for the questions, Regent Gully. Regent for Halem?
Thank you, Vice Chair Kinyanya. I want to go to your comment about a foundation of trust. And we've certainly seen that between Dean Toller and Mr. Holman. It's been appreciated. I've always been taught to trust, but verify everything that's presented to me. And this analysis, Dean Seibert, is greatly appreciated in that regard. It's one thing to say, these are the facts. It's another to verify that those are the facts, and this is the full deck that we are playing with. I also want to acknowledge that we, as a board and as an institution, do operate in, we operate in transparent ways, but sometimes our fora and our open meetings and the way we go about these things can feel really uncomfortable to those who don't operate in these spaces. And so I want to express my appreciation to Centra Care in having these discussions and allowing us to speak very openly and transparently about the financials, about commitments in the community, about commitments to greater Minnesota. I understand that that can sometimes be difficult when having those in a very, very open forum where you can't just have the conversation in a boardroom, a quieter boardroom that's not on YouTube. not on YouTube. And all of this to say that what we are doing here is a very methodical and stepwise approach to this university's commitment to continued education of medical professionals in our state. And we've made that commitment, and we need to see it through. And I greatly appreciate the careful diligence in each step as we go along. We have many more steps in front of us and many more pieces of this puzzle to put together. So any one of these meetings is not the end of the conversation. It's really just the beginning of the next chapter. And I want to express both my appreciation, but also my inquisitiveness as we continue to go forward, that all of these pieces and everything we've checked to this point continue in this trajectory. So thank you.
Thank you, and well said, Regent Forhailen. Vice Chair Hibsh.
Excuse me. Thanks, Vice Chair Kenyana. I would like to echo what my colleagues have said. I just have a great deal of gratitude and thankfulness that people are willing to tackle the big challenges that we have in our state. I mean, that's what our mission is, is to tackle the big challenges. And these individuals that have touched this have went out of their way to create something great for people in Minnesota. You know, everybody deserves to have a doctor. When you say, who's your doctor? And they say, I don't have one, and there's no one to assign you a doctor. That's huge, you know? And so in 25 years, we're going to have 1,000 more doctors running around the state, and it's thanks to all of you people. So I have a great deal of appreciation, and I think the whole state's going to thank you in the long term, and this is what our job is. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hibsh. Regent Farnsworth?
Thank you, Vice Chair Kenyana. Really brief comment in kind of echoing what Regent Forhailen and Vice Chair Hibsh said in terms of process and the significance of this. This topic of workforce development, rural healthcare, really wrapping our arms around the role that the university plays within the state, this is at the crux of that. It's a continuation of a really exciting thing that we have developing. I want to specifically thank Chair Wheeler in her capacity as the lead on the Special Committee on Academic Health for ensuring that we looked at this financial agreement separately as part of the process, as well being a regent not on that committee, but trying to keep up with the business of that committee when I can, just to make sure I'm staying educated. I really appreciate that this came in front of the full board for the reasons that Regent Forhailen put really eloquently to make sure that this process is continuing with transparency in a way that makes sense so the entire university community and the state can see that how we're embarking on this partnership. But just wanted to add my excitement for what I think is a really significant step today in a partnership that is going to be really consequential for the state of Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Farnsworth. You know, my comments won't be dissimilar to that of my colleagues. You know, this is really important, and I'm going to, there's a stat I've heard thrown around, and actually, the interim president shared it with the House Higher Ed Committee on Monday during that hearing, and it's that 1972, you know, when Mayo and UMD Med came online, that's the last time we added medical allocations in the state. Population's grown about 2 million since then, you know? So this is really important, and I'm glad it's happening. Regent Turner?
I've commented on this before, the fact that I have traveled the state for over a decade, and I would be remiss if I did not give a thanks once again for this program, give a thanks from all the people in rural Minnesota.
Thank you very much, Regent Turner. I saw her hand go up, and it's like I short-circuited. I didn't even finish my sentence, but I think she finished it for me. Colleagues, you know, I think we're all in agreement here. This is not for action. This did go through the special committee. It did come to the full board, the non-financial piece that was contingent on full board approval of the financial piece. We've reviewed it here, and this will come back to the Finance and Operations Committee in December. So seeing no further questions or comments, there's no further business for the board, and this special meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.